At six o'clock we'll get started, uh, we'll get started tonight and Timmy's gonna lead us with the prayer and then Chief Shepherd will lead us in the pledge. So if you're standing with us, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life that you've given us and as we go into this meeting, we just ask that anything we decide on would please you, Lord. And we just thank you for everyone that's here and asked you to watch over us and take care of us and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Timmy.
Yes, sir.
I call on March thirteenth, regular call me and to order Chris, do you see what we got?
Mr. Huckabee?
Here.
Mr. Daniel. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Frost?
Here.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mayor, you have the form.
First thing on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. Y'all had them, I hope you've had time to go over and look at them and see if there are any additions or subtractions to the minutes. If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I make the motion to accept the minutes.
Mr. Reddick?
I'll second.
Second, Timmy?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
And Mr. Huckabee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council. The next thing is the acceptance of the cash disbursements and financial statements to pay the bills. And I know Chris has sent them out along with the minutes and I hope you've had a chance to review the bills. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, I'd entertain a motion on paying the bills.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll second. First, for you, Chris.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
And Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, the next thing on the agenda is all business. Do, uh, any of the council members got anything on all business at all? We don't have nothing on the agenda, uh, unless y'all have something. Anybody got anything? We'll move right on to new business and the first thing is, uh, Ms. Karen Boone's here. She's with, uh, Sweet Pea Floors here on Main Street. It's the old, uh, the old floors there on Maple Street. Would you like to address the council?
Thanks for your hat. Let me speak tonight. It's very nice to be here. Uh, yes, I opened up Sweet Pea Floors. We're really used to be, uh, about in January. Getting my business started. Appreciate getting in your business or anything I can do for anybody. That would be great. We offer everything from fresh flowers to silks to Memorial Day gifts. And if I don't have it, I'll get it for you. But I've got thirty years' experience. I had a flower shop in Lexington for thirty years. I moved here about four, five years ago. Was working from home and missed my flowers. So I'm here and I love Russell Springs. What that says is very true in the community that cares. But thank you all very much and I want to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you and we love you too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help you move it on, we'll do anything we can.
Thank you.
We appreciate you and we appreciate your trust in us and putting the business here. The next thing on the agenda is something that we give away the first meeting of the year. And it was, uh, it's just something we started to people here in the community that we, uh, know that's made a difference in our community and supports the community with, uh, a lot of different things and a lot of different ways and, uh, this lady here, the one we selected, this will be the second one. We plan on giving at least six of these out this year and this is the second one and I know, uh, she works at the, uh, hospital auxiliary and, you know, I was thinking this morning what I was gonna say and I thought she might even come to ball games when I was played. Because I know she's there when all three of my kids played and when I refereed, she was there and I know when her daughter Stephanie was there, she's at all the games and, she never, it's very seldom you'll go to a ball game and she won't be at a ball game. And, uh, you know, she really supports the community and that's kind of what this award was meant for when we started it. It was for people who, uh, support, support the community and, and as of now, she's, uh, she's, uh, one of the board members. We've been a board member for a long time. So, you know, we want to partner with the school when we can too. So she's in with them and, and she's just been a, and she's an all-around great person and, and we, we thank the world of her. Her husband's even, uh, as good as she is to put up with her, but we love Mitchell too. So Brenda, come on up here. Now, just want to let you know this is the second one. So, and we're gonna try to give six away for the next several years.
I'm honored.
We, uh, we will let you know that, hey, Russell Springs thanks a lot of you and, and I know you do a lot for the hospital and you do a lot for this community. And you never ask no lacklights or nothing. So we want to make sure tonight that we recognize you and you're a Russell Springs anchor. I don't know how you and your chapel like that, but sweetheart, you're a Russell, you're a Russell, yeah, Russell Springs anchor. Zach, get a good picture of this. I want to see it on the Facebook up while. Brenda, thank you. You want to say anything?
No, I s- I'm just honored that I'm leaving, Mitch.
Well, you're honored. You're well to be honored. Okay, that we appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too, Mitch. I want to get that through before y'all can leave. You don't have to stay in this all this room. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one. It's ordinance adopting Deerview Lane, Deerview Lane into the city street system. And that's sponsored by Councilman Ricky Barnes. So, uh, Chris?
Uh, this is the second reading, uh, of the ordinance. This City of Russell Springs, Kentucky ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one. An ordinance adopting Deerview Lane into the City of Russell Springs city street system. Whereas the City of Russell Springs recognizes the importance of maintaining and improving public infrastructure for the safety convenience and the well-being of its residents and visitors. And whereas the property known as Deerview Lane has been properly constructed and maintained and, of course, with the city standards and is determined to be in the public's interest to officially adopt it into the city streets system. And whereas KRS chapter eighty-two provides cities in Kentucky with the authority to adopt, maintain and regulate public streets within their jurisdictions. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of City of Russell Springs, Kentucky as follows. Section one, adoption of Deerview Lane, the public right-of-way known as Deerview Lane located within Russell Springs, Kentucky. It's hereby adopted and accepted into City of Russell Springs, uh, city street system for maintenance and reg- and regulation. Section two, descriptions of the street and it's got the long description. I won't read all that because it'll bore you. Uh, and then, uh, section three, maintenance responsibility. Upon effective date of this ordinance, City of Russell Springs shall assume full responsibility of the maintenance, repair and the required improvements of Deerview Lane. Consistent with the standard procedures and application of other public streets within the city. Inspection and compliance, uh, Deerview Lane has been inspected. City's department, Streets Department is designated representative to confirm its compliance with the applicable state and federal laws as conditioned adoption upon otherwise approved by the City Council. Section five, repeal clause, any ordinance or part of the ordinance is hereby conflicted with anything or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Severability, section six, if any provision of this ordinance or its application to any person or circumstance is held to be invalid and the impolitics shall not affect other provisions or applications of the ordinance and it can be given an effect without the invalid provision or application added to this and the provisions of the ordinance are declared to be severable. Section seven, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication as required by law. Adopted and approved this thirteenth day of March twenty twenty-five. City Council, City of Russell Springs Signature, Eddie Thomas Mayor, attest Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk Treasure. First read was February thirteenth twenty-five, second read was March thirteenth twenty-five and publication date will be March twentieth of twenty-five. And that is your second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero one.
And do we have any discussion on it at all? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept Deerview Lane.
I make the motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Uh, motion by Rick, uh, motion by Rick. You need a second.
I'll second.
I'll second. But Timmy, roll call, roll, Chris.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Huckabee?
Yes.
And Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries, man.
Thank you, Council. That's, uh, we done got street lights on it. So that's a, that's a, that's a plus right there. The next thing is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two. It's an adopted ordinance of Green Ridge Drive in the city street system and that's sponsored by Councilwoman Dan.
Uh, the second read, City of Russell Springs, Kentucky ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two. An ordinance adopting Green Ridge Drive in the City of Russell Springs city street system. Whereas the City of Russell Springs recognizes the importance of maintaining and improving public infrastructure for the safety convenience and well-being of its residents and visitors. Whereas the property known as Green Ridge Drive has been properly constructed and maintained with the ordinance with the city standards and is determined to be in the public interest to officially adopt into the City of Russell Springs city street system. Whereas KRS, uh, chapter eighty-two provides cities in Kentucky with the authority to adopt, maintain or regulate public streets within their jurisdictions. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of City of Russell Springs, Kentucky as follows. Section one, adoption of, uh, Green Ridge Drive Lane, uh, public right-of-way known as Green Ridge Drive located within the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. It's hereby adopted and accepted into the City of Russell Springs official city street system for maintenance and regulation. Uh, uh, section two, description of the street. I'll skip all that's legal description. Section three, maintenance responsibility upon effective date of this ordinance, City of Russell Springs shall assume full responsibility of the maintenance repair and any required improvements of Green Ridge Drive consistent with the city standards and procedure applicable to other public streets within the city. Inspection and, uh, and compliance, section four, prior to adoption of this, uh, ordinance, Green Ridge Drive shall be inspected by the City Streets Department or designated representative to confirm its compliance with the applicable street construction and safety standards. Any efficiency stowed during the inspection may be resolved as conditioned adoption unless otherwise approved by the City Council. Section five, repeal or clause, all ordinance parts or ordinances in conflict here within or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section six, severability, if any provision of this ordinance or its application to any person or circumstances is held to be invalid and validity shall not affect other provisions or, or applications of the ordinance and shall be given effect with an invalid provision or application. And to this end, the provisions of the ordinance are declared to be, uh, severable. Section seven, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication as required by law. Adopted and approved the thirteenth day of March twenty twenty-five. City Council of Russell Springs, Kentucky Signature Line, Eddie Thomas Mayor, attest, uh, line Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk Treasure. And first read, February thirteenth twenty-five, second read, March thirteenth twenty-five and publication, March twenty twenty-five. And that is your second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two.
Any, uh, discussion on this? Just to let the council know, Gary, you and, uh, Lance, we've been working on this for two years. We just couldn't never get, get Bobby to get this, get the, uh, survey in right and he had to go through. We had to end up getting another lawyer candidate to, to do the lab workforce. But it's already blacktopped. It's already got lights on it. We haven't been snowing. We haven't been cleaning. It was snow and everything. So it's been done for, I guess, two years and, and, and we promised them if they had blacktopped it, we would get lights on it and take it in. So that's kind of where we are on that street. And if either one of you got any questions on it, I'd entertain, you know, I'd answer them right now. I mean, that's just where we're at on it.
And that's one of my little seizures, right?
Yeah.
Going to those apartments.
Goes back to the apartments back there, yeah.
It looks nice back there. It looks, now this campaign, it, it looks nice back there. So.
Yeah, it's, it's clean and, and Gene Vance and them really could take care of it. So.
Yeah.
Said who owns the apartments?
We'd take care of it.
Who owns them apartments?
Well, it, they're owned by, uh, a company out of, uh, I think Randy, Randy?
Sexton.
Sexton is the one that's kind of older. Kind of government, ain't they? Jeremy's, like, we, same way they, they build them and, and we, they're not local. But I know Gene and Don sold them the property and stuff. They told them the same thing we did, you know? If they would, uh, get them fixed up, they'd blacktop it and they did. So now we're, we, we told them we'd take it in. So, that's, that's what we told them we'd do. So, any other questions on it? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, accept second reading of ordinance twenty-five oh two.
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two.
That's from Gary and the motion.
I'll second.
That's okay, right. Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
And Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries, man.
Thank, thanks, Council. The next thing is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three. An ordinance regulating uniform municipal code for the manufacturing of transportation of storage and use of explosives. And that's sponsored by Councilman Timmy Hudson. Chris, you want to read that?
Uh, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three. City of Russell Springs, Kentucky ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, uniform municipal code for the manufacture, transportation, storage and use of explosives recommended by the Office of Mine Safety and Licensing. Article one, authority and scope, uh, one point one. This order shall apply to the manufacturer possession, storage, sale, transportation and use of explosives and blasting agencies, agents within the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. One point zero two, this order shall not apply to, A, explosives or blasting agents following course of transportation via railroad, water, highway or air when explosives and blasting agents are being moved under the jurisdiction of and in conformity with regulations adopted by any federal or state department or agency. Uh, section B, this transportation use of explosives or blasting agents in the, in the normal and emergency operation of state or federal agencies, nor the municipal fire and police departments providing that are acting in their official capacity and in the proper performance of their duties. Section C, small arms ammunition and pumps thereof, which are associated with Gun Control Act of nineteen sixty-eight, Title eighteen, Chapter forty-four, U.S. Code and regulations promulgated there under. Uh, section D, blasting standards, KRS thirty-five, uh, three fifty-one point three one five through three fifty-one point three seven zero and regulations, uh, eight zero five KAR, uh, for section ten through, uh, for section sixty. Uh, section E, explosive and blasting agents being used on the site of federal and state projects. Article two, stores and transportation and use, uh, section two point zero one, all activities with the scope of this ordinance shall conform to the regulations of the Kentucky Department of Mines and Minerals, um, A O five K R, K A R, uh, section four through point zero one zero. Article three, blasting permits. Section three point zero one, no persons or corporations shall conduct a blasting operation with the City of Russell Springs without first obtaining a permit from the City of Russell Springs. Section three point zero two, the fee for a blasting permit or permit renewal shall be, uh, five hundred dollars. Uh, section three point zero three, no person or corporation shall be issued a permit to blast on public property unless the person is to be in charge of blasting holds a valid Kentucky blaster's license. Section three point oh four, no person or corporation shall be issued a permit to blast on private property with more than five pounds of explosives unless the person in charge of the blasting holds a valid Kentucky blaster's license. Three point zero five, blasting permits shall specify the location of the blasting to be permitted. Uh, section three point zero six, in the event of that project is not completed, uh, blasting permits must be renewed annually upon the application's payment of the renewal fee. Section three point oh seven, a permit allowing blasting shall be issued upon application but on public property shall not become valid unless, uh, seven days after it's, uh, issued. Three point oh eight, if unanticipated blasting is required, permit may become, uh, become valid as soon as the City of Russell Springs knows by its all required agencies. Uh, three point oh nine, on any contact, contract issued by an agency of the City of Russell Springs, blasting permits shall be issued by the City of Russell Springs unless otherwise specified in said contract. Three point one zero, false tables made for the purpose of obtaining a permit shall render the permit null and void from the time of the issue. Three point one one, copies of the blasting permits shall be distributed by the City of Russell Springs to the following required agencies, police, fire, municipal engineering, utilities, et cetera. Article four, manufacture and sale, four point oh one, no person or corporation shall operate a business establishment where explosives are maintained for sale or the manufacture or sale of explosives in the City of Russell Springs without first obtaining a permit from the City of Russell Springs. Four point zero ten, the permit for this, the fee for this permit is five hundred dollars. Article five, penalties. Five point oh one, any person or corporation violating the procedures of this ordinance shall be fined not less than a thousand dollars, no more than two thousand or, and, and/or shall be imprisoned up to, but no more than ten days. Signature line for, uh, Eddie Thomas Mayor, attest line for Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk. Uh, first read was February thirteenth twenty-five, second read, March thirteenth twenty-five, publication date, uh, March twentieth twenty-five. And that is your second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three.
Any questions on that ordinance? It's just some stuff that we're cleaning up and like Jeremy said, we, uh, checked the KLC and they said it was just a lot of housekeeping and stuff. We never had an ordinance and we're trying to get all of our ones to straighten up. Probably be more because I'm gonna get Tommy to start digging into them. So, uh, there could be even more. We'll have to straighten up in the next six months. So, any questions on it?
This one, it sounds a lot like it's just protecting the citizens and.
It is and the city.
The city, yeah.
And, uh, and that's what we're trying to make and that's what KLC advises to do. Take care of your house and your people and then you don't have to worry about it. So, need a motion to accept that ordinance.
I make a motion to accept, uh, twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
I'll second. Pro, Bo. Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes.
And Mr. Frost?
Yes.
And motion carries, man.
I may have gave you the wrong number. It's actually twenty twenty-five zero three.
Yeah, zero three. Thank you, Timmy. Thank you, Council. Twenty twenty. The next thing is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four. An ordinance, uh, planning, that's same thing, Chris.
This is the legal summary.
Okay, so it's first reading.
Yeah, first read.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, legal summary of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four sponsored by Councilman Barnes, City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. This ordinance pertains to the annexation of certain real property within corporate city limits of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky to ensure the full inclusion of said property within city boundaries. The properties, uh, subject to annexation is located off of French Valley Road in Russell County, Kentucky. Is identified as map number zero three three dash zero zero dash zero zero dash five two point zero zero encompassing approximately forty-three point, uh, two zero acres. This property is currently approximately eighty-five percent within the existing city limits and this annexation is intended to incorporate the remaining portion of the property in the city limits of Russell Springs to establish clear and consistent city boundaries. The annexation of this property is conducted within, with the consent of the property owners and in accordance with KRS eighty-one eight point four one two, governing consensual annexations. This annexation is determined to be in the best interest of the City of Russell Springs and will ensure accurate jurisdictional mapping, proper municipal services and regulatory enforcement within the entity of the property. This order authorizes the amendment of the city boundary map to reflect the full incorporated, incorporation of the property into the corporate limits. City Clerk is directed to file certified properties of this ordinance within the city. Uh, Russell County Clerk, the Kentucky Secretary of State and any other necessary entities as required by law. Upon passage and publication as required by law, the annexation territory shall be officially recognized as part of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. And that is your first read of, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
And that's your first reading tonight. We won't have no action on it. So you've, uh, twenty twenty-five oh four. So the next thing on the agenda is municipal order twenty twenty, it's a municipal order twenty twenty-five oh one. It's amendment to investments sponsored by Councilman Timmy Hudson. Chris, you want to read it?
Uh, City of Russell Springs Municipal Order twenty twenty-five, uh, dash zero one. An amendment to Municipal Order twenty twenty-five dash zero five of, of the City Council of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky directing that all interest earning and reinvestments from the CDs to be deposited into the water sewer maintenance account, uh, fund account. Whereas Municipal Order number twenty twenty-five dash zero five authorizes the mayor and the city clerk treasure to invest certain city funds, including sewer sink funds, water sewer maintenance funds, meter deposit funds and depreciation reserve funds into CDs for the period of six months to eighteen months. And whereas it is in the best interest of the City of Russell Springs to ensure that all interest earnings and reinvestments generated from these investments are allocated to explicitly exclusively to the water sewer maintenance fund account to support ongoing infrastructure improvements, repairs and maintenance. And whereas the City Council finds it necessary to amend Municipal Order twenty twenty-five dash zero five provide specific direction for the allocation of those funds. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of Russell Springs, Kentucky as follows. Number one, amendment to the interest allocation. Number two, reinvestment of funds. Number three, reporting requirements for severability clause. Uh, this amendment shall become effective immediately upon adoption of the City Council approval by the mayor. Adopted this thirteenth day of March of twenty twenty-five. Signature line for Eddie Thomas Mayor, attest line for Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk and Treasurer. Uh, certification that I am, uh, undersigned that I have hereby witnessed Mr. Thomas's signature upon passage.
That is, uh, where we bought the CDs and what we did, we, we asked the council to put it in the general fund and we, we, we did. But we feel like with everything, infrastructure coming down the road in the next two years that we're gonna need that money a lot worse in the water than we would the general fund. So we want to just put it right back in the water maintenance, uh, an account. That way if we get an eighty, twenty matching grant or something like that, we've got money that we can match that grant with. So that's all that is, is just asking the council first to put it in, in back in the wa- the other thing wasn't back. It was, we voted to get a, get a, get to where we could buy the CDs. Then we wanted to put them in the general fund and then after talking with Alan and, and Chris and everybody, we've got a lot of infrastructure problems that we're gonna face in the next three to five years. I mean, a bunch. So we want to start now, getting ahead of the game. So if we can get some money in there and get it built up a little bit, if we run up on eighty, twenty or seventy, thirty matching grant, it'll just make it easier if we've got our match to get it. So that's where we're at. Any questions? Any questions at all?
Sounds pretty simple.
Well, we're gonna have to get a, we're gonna have to get ahead of the game because, uh, and the ball's about to catch up with us. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
I make a motion, but Gary need a second.
I'll second it.
Second, my Lance. Chris, roll call.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes.
And Mr. Barnes?
Yeah.
Uh, motion carries.
Thank you, Council. We'll, uh, going forward, we're gonna be talking about some stuff. That's, me and Jeremy was in Washington this past week. We just got home late yesterday afternoon. Then was in Frankfurt the week before and I'm gonna give a little update on that here in a minute. Chief, you got a police department update for me?
I do. For the month of February, we had, uh, two DUI arrests, uh, three alcohol-related arrests, two drug-related arrests, twenty-nine warrants served, uh, twenty-nine traffic charges cited, thirteen traffic collisions investigated, uh, total of forty-four arrests and a total of three hundred and sixty-four calls for service.
I'm busy, Chief.
I'm busy. Busy, busy.
Thank you, chief. Anybody got any questions for the chief? Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the job you get due for. Uh, next thing is Jeremy with economic development update.
On the economic aspect, we did bill three RFIs this month for some new businesses to locate here. And also there's been several meetings going on with the Salvador judge. I think I've tried to give each council member an update from, we had a brick construction meeting today to bring you up to speed. This was from the meeting prior the date of that. So that will give everyone a synopsis of where, where that project is at. And they're hoping to, the, after today's meeting, the plan is that the, uh, civil's done, everything's done, as you all can tell. It will go to bid March, uh, it's Monday, this coming Monday. So the bid process will start on that, a thousand five hundred square foot building. So that's, that's where we're at on that.
Counsel, any questions for Jeremy? Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate your work. Next thing is the mayor's report and, uh, the council got anything before we get to the mayor's report? Anything?
I don't know anything.
Appreciate you guys, what you do and, and how you have to, uh, grow the city. And that's one thing, me and Jeremy was in Frankfurt last week, two or three days and meeting with, we met with, uh, several representatives and senators. We met with ours, Josh and Senator Gardner, and then we met with several more. We met with Kenneth Church and, and, uh, Scott Maiden and just different ones because, you know, you never know when something might go in front of them that they're voting on. And if they know we've been there and talked to them, they know we care enough. And then this week we was, we left on Saturday. I did. He left on Sunday to go to Washington and, uh, I feel like we really had a great, great meeting up there. We met with, uh, Jamie Coleman. We met with Mitch McConnell. We met with our people and then we also met with Hal Rogers and Andy Barr. Because a lot of them guys are gonna be running jockeying when some, we're gonna have a new governor, so one, somebody's gonna file and run for governor. Then whoever leaves that spot, somebody will file for that spot. Mitch is leaving McConnell, so somebody's gonna file for his spot, so we just felt like it's very important to meet with their, we met with all seven or eight senators that was up there and congressmen and, uh, what we was pushing is infrastructure. Uh, we're, we're gonna sit down with the council a little later, lay out a little plan. We got, uh, we got a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for, uh, the water pumps up here and if you, uh, go by Water Fertilize up here, which is right above Owen Town Road there where the old VFW DAV is going east eighty, you'll see they broke ground up there. They're gonna be up there working for the next two or three months and a press might want to say, you know, be careful going through that area because they're gonna be up there working. And we got a grant for two pressure pumps there for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's just something, you know, if we go to Frankfurt and we go to Washington and fight for this stuff, I feel like we're gonna get it and I feel really comfortable. We got two or three more coming down the road. Don't you, Jeremy?
I feel real good about where we're at, the position we put ourselves in.
So, uh, that's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. It's not matching. And what that'll do, that'll push more volume to our tanks up in the Eli Salem area. Now it ain't gonna push more water because you can't push no more water. We're already pushing our pumps around twenty-three hours a day right now. So, uh, we're gonna have more volume up there and Alan feels like that it'll, it'll, we'll be able to go ahead and, uh, once we get them tanks filled, uh, then we can work on, uh, our, our tanks here in town that, that's staying a little lower, so. And then we've got, we got some stuff in the working for a few more grants coming and I feel really comfortable about them, so. Uh, that's just to let you know, a little update on that and a little update on what we went to Washington and Frankfurt to do, you know, and, and, uh, we feel like the city's in a real good place right now. And just to let you know, today, the guy from, uh, Showguns, Ronnie Salvador said he wanted us to get everything over on the, his, the property to give him water and electric over. He would like to bring the Showguns truck down there and just set it all summer. Now they will be open every day during summer, but they'll set it there. They'll have certain days that they'll be open and, uh, he'd like to set it there all summer. So, uh, we're gonna start on it this, this week, this next week. Trying to clean off over there and working with Alan and working with Tyler, like, of the KU to get all that stuff over there to where we can, uh, get, uh, get our, get the Showgun truck over where we can have it, just to give everybody a little taste of what's coming, so. That's where we're at and like I said, I feel really comfortable in the direction we're going and where we're at, so. I think it's gonna be a busy, busy summer. And I think the council will be getting a lot of calls, what's this, what's that, what's going on here and what's going on there, so. I will try to keep y'all better informed and more informed, so. If I have any more questions, I need a motion to adjourn. I can motion to adjourn. Got a motion. Ricky, you need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Gary. Timmy and Lance wants to stay here. All in favor, say yes. We are adjourned. That little man said, uh-uh, I won't eat.